I'd like to call the Joint City Council and Planning Commission work session to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll. Someone calling the roll? Councilmember Hodgkins? Just calling roll. Councilmember White?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Dominguez?
Here.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Hart?
Here.
Councilmember Maria?
Here.
Mayor Schneider?
Here.
And Planning Commission Chair Higgins?
Here.
Vice Chair Wiscombe?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz not present.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan not present. Commissioner Lodge and Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Ms. Lodge is here too. Commissioner Lodge, thank you. Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda today? So if you could make your way over to the podium, and I will gauge a couple of minutes. Thank you. Go right ahead.
I'm here, members of council, members of the Planning Commission and members of the planning staff. I'm Lee Muldever from the Citizens Planning Association, and I have two brief comments, one objective and one subjective. And the objective one is an item that you've been talking about with these, at these work sessions for the last few years. And if you have a chance to look at Mondays or Tuesdays, Wall Street Journal, you'll notice that they have results of extensive studies of how vacation rentals affect housing stock, the inclination of residents to rent in buildings or neighborhoods that feature them, and what kind of revenue they bring into communities that have them. And the different studies are not unanimous, but they're very, very interesting and informative. And for the most part, what they suggest is that it's not a tremendous positive for most communities. The subjective part is, I saw some of you at the memorial for our old friend Gene Graffy, but some of you may not yet be aware that a strong friend of this city and of the planning process and of this council, my old friend and neighbor Sylvia Glass, has passed away two years into her second century. And she served on the CPA board with our old friend Dr. David Gebhardt, of whom I'm always reassured to see his smiling face guarding this room. And she was a strong believer in honest, open government, in direct interaction between residents, elected officials, and staff. She firmly believed that most residents, when they had objective information, could help decide issues for themselves. And she really believed in strong interaction between residents, neighborhoods, and community. And she was of a generation who had mastered the art of being passionate, where you could disagree without being disagreeable. So I just wanted to let everyone know that Sylvia has moved on. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Halloween coming up, right? So, okay. Ms. Arias, come on up.
I'm Judy Arias. I'm a member of the HLC, but I'm speaking as an individual today. We have been informed since three years that the ordinance regarding historic preservation would be done. Two weeks ago, we were informed at HLC that this matter was being dropped, and there was no date for when it would be completed. Your council issued this a top four, among the top four priorities at the last meeting. This ordinance needs to be done specifically and especially because of all the things that the state of California is doing. We need to protect our historic resources, and I'm respectfully asking you to direct staff to have this ordinance completed and done. We were assured by Mr. Lamone that it would be here in August. Previously, we'd been assured in 2016, and it's now way late. It's time to get a move on it, and please get it done. We need it at landmarks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, I want to just welcome our delegation from San Juan, Philippines, our sister city, who's here learning about how we do things. And hopefully, this will be not as confusing as it may appear at some point, but it's a lot of work going on. And our vice mayor, the vice mayor of San Juan, Philippines is here, as well as, I think, three different members of the city council and people from the city government and community. So welcome to Santa Barbara. So if you'd like to stand up. Great. We're keeping them busy today, so. All right, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Brooke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and Planning Commissioners. Here we are today, our semi-annual joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission. Today's meeting, we will be covering a lot. I'll say that upfront, but we're going to try to get through our portion as quickly as we can to leave adequate time for deliberation and direction to staff. We'll begin by reviewing current major work efforts. There were some outlined in your council agenda report. We'll highlight, Deborah, Ms. Deborah Andalora will highlight the local coastal program update, and then our, this year's general plan implementation report. And then Scott Vincent will come up and provide a brief legislative update. As you're aware, there's been a lot of new legislation passed. He'll give you an update on the most relevant for you to know about today, as it also relates to workload in some cases. Part of your recommendation is that council also consider a request by members of the public to prepare Milpus Eastside Neighborhood Design Guidelines. That was a request to have it on today's agenda for discussion. And then ultimately, for you all to provide us some direction on our workload and our next few top priorities. And so with that, I will hand it over to Deborah right away.
Good morning, council, Planning Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to be speaking today about the local coastal program update first. There's been a lot of activity since I was here previously to speak about this. I'm going to go pretty quickly through some accomplishments we've had, and then to talk about the rollout of the draft coastal land use plan. So one thing that has occurred is, we have been working with a post-certification permanent appeal jurisdiction map for many years. If you've ever seen it, it's kind of dog-eared, ripped, and hand-drawn. The state undertook projects statewide to digitize these maps, and we've been working with their mapping unit over the last year, and we have negotiated corrections to the map. This is really a great tool for us now because we can actually determine how some of the boundaries and jurisdictional lines were determined. This was certified by the Coastal Commission in September, and we're actively using it now. That was a big boom for us. And we also had an intern this summer that photo documented our entire shoreline at 300-foot transects. And the last time that this had been done, it was done by hand in 1970, which is really not a reliable source of information, but this is great. We now have a record of our shoreline going forward. The big news is that we are getting ready to roll out our draft coastal land use plan. Last time we were here in the fall, directed us to continue to work with the Coastal Commission staff. That resulted in over 19 more meetings with them. The good news is, we have very few remaining issues. There's generally strong Coastal Commission staff support for the draft. During this time period, the USGS rolled out a new coastal model for sea level rise, and we have incorporated that new model and answered a lot of questions and concerns we had with our previous modeling. So that is a big change with this draft coastal land use plan. Overall, the plan demonstrates the city's continued commitment to access for all to the beach, protection of natural resources in the built environment, and the appropriate uses of land in the coastal zone. We have a lot of new policies that document criterion interpretations used today for CDP approval, so this is going to be really helpful going forward in certainty for the public, applicants, decision-makers, and planners. Our schedule for release is November 11th. We're hosting a community workshop or open house in the waterfront area. We welcome everybody to attend that. That will also be when the draft coastal land use plan is available. November and December, we'll be going to the Harbor, Parks, and Rec Commissions, the Creeks Advisory Committee, and anybody that wants us to come and tell them, educate them about the plan. Lot of informational meetings during that time, public outreach. In the spring, we anticipate being before the Planning Commission, followed by the council, and then on to the Coastal Commission, hopefully, next summer. As you'll recall, we also received approximately $286,000 from the Coastal Commission to continue to study sea level rise. We currently have a request for proposals out to do a sea level rise adaptation plan. That will be the next step in planning for sea level rise. That work effort will need to wrap up by spring of 2019. We also received funding for a lower-cost visitor-serving accommodation study, and to date, we haven't done anything. We anticipate that in early 2018, we will also be releasing a request for proposals to have a consultant come onboard and take over that work effort for us. So that's your update on your local coastal program update. And now turn our attentions to the 2017 General Plan Implementation and Adaptive Management Program Report. We do this annually, gives us good feedback about how we're doing with our general plan implementation. This year's report is coming off the heels of doing a community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. As you'll recall, our general plan is built on a framework of sustainability, and so this year, we asked ourselves the question, knowing where we stand with greenhouse gas emissions, is the implementation of the Climate Action Plan strategies and the general plan policies helping the city achieve sustainability? So I'm going to talk a little bit about the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. First, just for you to understand, it's not a simple matter to measure these. You don't go out with a meter and just figure out, this is our level. You have to look at these results with a grain of salt. It's very complicated, and it's based on a lot of assumptions. The good thing with our emissions inventory this year is that it was a staff effort, and we had previously done two of these, and they had been handled by consultants. And our in-house staff utilized a global protocol, so trying to standardize how the results are reported, and actually went back and standardized those past two reports. And this is important because going forward, we'll actually be able to see trends in how we're doing. So the results of this is pretty positive. From 1990 to 2015, we had a 28% reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions. Where you can see, we had the greatest gains or reductions are in the waste sector. You can see on the pie chart, just the proportions there, much less of the emissions are coming from waste. The energy is relatively similar, and more of that is because of the cleaner sources of energy. Where we're seeing a little bit of trouble is in the transportation sector, where we've actually had quite a bit of gain in the greenhouse, in the proportion of greenhouse gas emissions. So when we, when we look forward, there's a lot of variables. So this inventory was done in 2015. We can do an inventory now whenever we want to. Some of the things that we can see as being sort of wild cards with our next inventory is that in 2015, we didn't account for the D-SAL plant, which is going to be a large energy user. Then on the other side of that coin is that we are seeing more and more renewable energy sources, so they could offset each other. With on-road vehicular greenhouse gas emissions, we're anticipating that there will be changes in vehicle miles traveled, more than likely increases there. And offsetting that could be improved vehicle fuel efficiency. So we're going to need to continually watch this. We took that information, and we looked at the relationship to all of the Climate Action Plan strategies and our general plan policies. The Climate Action Plan serves as our guiding document. It was a comprehensive mitigation program because the general plan determined that we would have significant impacts with regard to greenhouse gases. Our achievements are that we have met our community-wide emissions reduction targets. Our per capita on-road vehicular emission target has been met, and the community-wide emissions are being reduced faster than were forecasted in the Climate Action Plan. These are all really positive. Our challenges are that the per capita vehicle emissions are being reduced slower than forecasted. So that's from the, all the vehicles that are on the roadways today. We have those changing conditions that I just talked about, and that when we look at the strategies in the Climate Action Plan, the easy ones, they've been accomplished. So Appendix B of your report has all 100 strategies listed in there, and it gives you a quick summary of where we're at. Twenty of the strategies are now complete, completely done. That's three more than 2016. Many of the strategies are partially complete, ongoing, or in progress. There's nothing that we identified that was behind schedule here. Where we see challenges going forward are that the new statewide emission and regional per capita vehicular emission targets are going to be difficult to reach if we continue on the pathway that we're on. The city recently adopted new citywide renewable energy use targets, and the Global Covenant of Mayors requires us to continually update our Climate Action Plan. For those reasons, as part of our adaptive management program, we would be recommending that there be an update to the Climate Action Plan that's prioritized. We believe that there's likely to be grant funding available for this, so it will still require some staff resources. We then turned our attention to our general plan and the policies, and we really tried to focus on those that would have the largest impact on the transportation greenhouse gas emissions. Our vision for transportation is to create a diverse transportation network. Where we're at with implementation of the policies, two-thirds of commuters still drive alone to work. Transit ridership has decreased. We've got good walking and biking rankings, and while, you know, it may not be all sunny compared to the state and the nation, the city is actually progressive in these areas. We've had a number of programs that have been implemented, and this is contributing to our sustainable transportation network. Where we see challenges are that our vehicle miles traveled are nearly unchanged from the 2008 baseline till now. And again, we're seeing, we're anticipating that vehicle miles travel is going to go up in the future. We're recommending that you continue to prioritize and fund and implement sustainable transportation projects. There's a number of them that are still included in the Climate Action Plan, as well as in the general plan policies, and that we continue to update the city's traffic model so that we can monitor this. These are both efforts that are typically funded through the Public Works Department. We looked at growth management. Here, our vision in the general plan is to manage growth commensurate with our limited resources and to provide for as much housing as we can within our resources. Where we stand is that we've seen a slight improvement in our jobs-housing balance. Our non-residential development, the amount of it and its location is occurring as was envisioned by the general plan. Housing activity is robust, but it's not above where the general plan assumed it would be, the general plan EIR assumed it would be, and it's within the housing elements' quantified objectives. What we did think was interesting was that in 2017, we've had the lowest allocation of growth management program non-residential square footage and the highest level of housing development activity in 20 years. So we're not recommending that there needs to be any course corrections. The growth management programs in its infancy and development is occurring as intended. We do believe we need to monitor housing, and we do a really very in-depth housing report for you in the spring each year. We will continue to do that, just to assure that we don't exceed our EIR assumptions or quantified objectives. As part of the review of our general plan, we always take a look at the EIR. The EIR was prepared, it's a full-scope citywide environmental assessment of the 2011 general plan, and it forecasted build-out to the year 2030. The city invested a lot of money in this general plan, and it was, it was so that development going forward would be able to tear off of the program EIR and use an exemption that's available through SEQA, exemption 15183, which really is a cost savings and a time savings to development projects. Prior to having the ability to use this exemption, projects would be subject to having to do, larger projects, an initial study with a mitigated negative declaration, and the rough charge for that is $10,000 or more, plus the studies that go into it, and it typically takes about six months. Other projects would be required to prepare an EIR, and those are typically $100,000 or more and a year of time. The concern is that our general plan program, EIR, is getting dated, and there's been a number of changes at the state and federal levels. One of them is that the state has changed the way, or the state threshold methodology for assessing traffic impacts from a level of service standard to a vehicle miles traveled standard, and we need to reflect that in our EIR. There's a number of other changes that have occurred, as well as just changes to the environment that we need to keep up with, to keep that document fresh so that our applicants can continue to use it. Appendix A of your report lists all of the mitigation measures and the status of those. We believe that there needs to be an update of the general plan EIR if we're going to continue to use it and offer this exemption to applicants going forward. That will be something that we would likely have a consultant help us out with, like there's no grant funding for us to do that. Portions of it could be done in-house, but for efficiency, I believe a consultant would be more appropriate, and we don't have a cost estimate of how much that would be. But that should be prioritized, if that's something that the council wants to continue to be able to offer to applicants. There are a number of sustainable transportation programs that were mitigation measures that are, they, they're identified in the EIR. They have not been implemented, but those are programs that we believe would continue to help us possibly reduce greenhouse gas emissions going forward, and so we would recommend that those be prioritized and implemented. Typically, they're part of the Public Works's capital improvement program. And so in summary, we're recommending an update to the Climate Action Plan, an update to the general plan EIR, and then continuing to implement sustainable transportation programs and continuing to update the city's traffic model. And that completes my report.
Great. I think we'll just have questions around the room at this point. We're going to go through the whole presentation and then open it up for public comment on anything, but any questions on, from around the table about this portion? Mr. Dominguez?
I have a question about the coastal plan certification. Why is it going to take so long now that we're getting a draft? It looks like the draft is going to be presented in November, and then we don't get around to voting on it until summer. Is there a way we can compress that down for two or three months?
Councilmember Dominguez, when we release it on November 11th, it will be available for a 60-day public review period. We believe then we would assemble and review the comments that are received, package them up for the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, it may take them more than one meeting to get through this document, and then, based on their recommendation, get it to the council as soon as possible. I think- I think it, it is a pretty streamlined schedule.
Well, it sounds like it would be three months at Planning Commission and I don't think they want to spend three months on it, but they can maybe speak to that. 60 days plus, let's give them 30 days to, to deal with it and that's a three-month timeline.
We can attempt to shorten the time period. We're still anticipating getting a written comment letter from the Coastal Commission staff that we will have to resolve the few remaining issues that we have. But we can try and shorten the timeframe as much as possible because, believe me, we want it to end too.
And one way to do that too, could you combine, it looks like you're rolling it out to Parks and Rec and Harbor. Could we do that in one joint meeting? Because here's a problem I foresee is if some stakeholders at one of the meetings suggest changes, are you then going to revamp it? I mean, I don't think you'd be able to once the draft is out, so why not have one big joint meeting where all the stakeholders are there? It's great for the stakeholders because then they get to hear everyone's comments without having to come to a, a string of meetings.
The meetings that we will be going to, the Parks and Rec Commission and the Harbor Commission and the Creeks Advisory Committee, they're informational meetings. So it would be introducing the document and letting them know what the doc, how the document may affect their management of resources in the city. But we believe that the Planning Commission meeting would be that big giant stakeholder meeting that you're referring to. They will be the ones who will need to grapple with the bulk of the comments that are received.
Thank you.
Just to point out one thing, that unlike the general plan, once the city council certifies this, it goes to the Coastal Commission and then it's out of our hands. It, it could go another year at the Coastal Commission while they dittle around before they get it on their agenda and actually certify it. So it does not become operative until the Coastal Commission certifies it.
Ms. Mario?
November 11th is a Saturday. What, what time and where? Let's kick it off.
Yeah.
Want to let the public know.
Councilmember Mario, it is 11 to 3 at the Chase Palm Park Center and it will be a drop-in style open house. We'll have stations set up that explain, you know, various issues that the plan addresses, coastal permitting. People can come in and see on maps exactly where their property is and what policies will be affecting them.
Sounds good. I know the Audubon Society is interested in the beach management, beach habitat management. Thank you.
Ms. Lodge and then Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there significant differences between the current coastal plan and what is being
Commissioner Lodge, we tried to adhere as much as possible to the direction that we were given, which was to carry forward the 2011 general plan policies, modernize the existing coastal land use plan and begin to address sea level rise. And so there are some differences. I think where you see more detail and development standards on issues that have been historically challenging for us is where there is a lot of what you would say, well, where did this policy come from? So for instance, it may have said protect coastal resources previously. This tells you exactly how we're going to protect coastal resources, how they will be studied, what the standard of review is, who's reviewing it. A lot of that was added at the request of the Coastal Commission staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Andalora, I was going back to the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions pie chart and what struck me is that in the, the three categories mentioned, that numerically, yes, we had significant improvement in, in the, than the yellow and the gray and, and, and energy and waste, which over which we have some control with transportation. Transportation, actually numerically, the amount of metric tons is, is pretty flat, but it's not less, but it is, it is relatively flat. And that kind of brings me to my question about things that we control and things we don't control. Since 1990, we've had, we've had the cross-town freeway, we've had the cross-town shuttle, we've had a different, a litany of transportation plans involving commuters, employees, things that we've tried, things we've abandoned and whatnot. So our efforts aren't static and it's really hard to measure that trajectory given all those, that myriad of efforts. So going forward, I'm wondering if we, as we go through to explore these models, if we can come to some kind of, is it possible to come to some kind of consensus about a firm direction? Because we really have kind of played on a dartboard with our different efforts and plans with employee commuters and whatnot. And the two big growth factors, because the town's been relatively static, of course, our city college and UCSB over which we have no control and no, no traffic monitoring for. So I'm just kind of wondering if all that can be factored into the next effort as opposed to kind of status quo. I mean, we had a fabulous presentation by you guys on the, at the Sustainability Committee about all this. But it's frustrating to see the different models and methodologies kind of change every time we look at this and it's hard to get an apples-for-apples comparison of where we've been and where we're going.
Councilmember Rouse, that's one of the benefits of having taken a step back and then employed this global protocol and having the software and someone in-house be able to track our greenhouse gas emissions so that we can at least see for our own jurisdiction exactly how we're progressing. So I think you, the next one will be very much apples-to-apples going forward. And yes, I, I think we do need to take a really in-depth look at where we've been with our sustainable transportation strategies and where we should be going with them going forward. And that's a lot of what we would want to look at as part of a Climate Action Plan update.
I have three questions. What are the remaining LCP issues with the coastal staff?
Councilmember Hart, coastal access parking, extending their reach outside of where we see the key coastal access parking areas. And I, I'm hopeful that we can resolve that with them, but that is, that's one of the largest ones. The change in utilizing a different sea level rise model, right? They required us to go back and revise a lot of the policies and we still have not received their written comments on those policies. We believe that they, we brought ourselves more in line with where they wanted us to be, but we don't know yet. And then there is, the Coastal Commission staff loves to wordsmith everything and so there's still some wordsmithing that we believe that we are going to have to negotiate with them.
And the other question was, or the other two questions is, what's the status of the historic resources ordinance? We heard from Commissioner Arias that they were told that it was stopped. Is that accurate?
Sure. Councilwoman Hart, I was going to speak to that later. I'm happy to answer now. It has been put on pause for a couple of reasons. One, you'll recall, your council somewhat recently approved some infill design guidelines that the HLC and ABR were very happy to have. That put a pause on our amendments to Title 22 because we pulled design review resources from that in order to push those infill design guidelines forward. We've also had staffing changes that I've not wanted to push that Title 22 amendment package forward until I have people in, hired, trained, ready to help out in other areas. Right now, we have staff covering a variety of different duties that are outside their norm and I'm just not ready to add to their plate continuing that forward. And also, the workload of the city attorney's office is a factor as well. As we're at the stage right now where we've checked in with ordinance committee several times, HLC many times, and it's down to the actual drafting of the ordinance language before it returns to the ordinance committee in HLC.
So is there an approximate new date of completion?
I, for, I could speak for planning staff that I wouldn't be able to put resources on it until we have our new zoning ordinance more fully implemented. We have some processes we need to establish before I could pull staff from that in order to work on the Title 22 amendment. So three to four months, I could probably get staff back working on that.
And then the last question, does anyone know what the status of the use of the zip cars is at this point?
I see Mr. Dayton.
Yes, Councilmember Hart, we're actually having a presentation at TCC mid-November, the end of November. The, short of it is that the cars that are outside the downtown have not been performing very well. The worst is the west side car on Mitchell Treina. And then the ones that are on the west side of downtown have been high performers and we're looking to possibly add cars. So the garages, the cars in the garages, not, not so, not so good. Surprisingly, Depot, not so good. And the east side marginal.
So if you summed it all up and you added them all up, what kind of usage rate is, is happening? Five percent? 10 percent?
I don't have the exact statistics in my head, but we're quite pleased with the cars that are on the west downtown. And the approach was to kind of shotgun it and see where we get the, the best lift and then, and then move the cars around. We're also proposing to move a car into the lower west side area where the densities are higher. And so we're working to do a public outreach process so that we can engage the neighborhood on the appropriate location for that space.
And will that report come back to council as well or is it just going to the TCC?
It can. We can choose, we can figure out a format that would be best to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions just on this item? Yep, go ahead, Ms. Wiscombe, because I want to make sure, we have a lot more to cover, so.
Thank you. Mr. Dayton, I, just one more question for you. One of the recommendations is to continue to up, continue to work on sustainable transportation programs. So what would your priorities be for those?
Well, thank you for that question. In, in the general plan, the, what we did to figure out which mitigations for sustainable transportation would be the best ones, we actually employed Nelson Nygaard to do some metrics with the model to try to guess what the best metrics were. Some of the, some of the answers were absolutely, we couldn't find any statistical evidence, but the one that was the highest is the one, perhaps the one that's most controversial. And that's price parking in the downtown on-street. So given the economic climate and, and trying to figure out, you know, when that would be the best time for us to do something, I think has been a challenge for us. But that accounts for something like 80% of the transformation in the sustainable transportation program.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I saw it at the Sustainable Subcommittee as well and, you know, a lot of great information. Maybe just a little more emphasis, if you could, on transportation. As we go forward, we've seen a great improvement in energy and waste. And I think the impression I got from our previous discussions, also at Planning Commission, is that the benefits of those maybe have most significantly already been experienced. But as we go forward on transportation, as far as a robust policy, could you relate that to the targets that are coming down from the state? And what has the magnitude of the improvements and methodology for transportation improvement that we're going to have to address?
Commissioner Campanella, that would be something that we would look at through a update to our Climate Action Plan. I don't have answers for you because I think we really need to do some evaluation about how to get to those targets, where we are today, the trajectory that we're on, and then what do we need to get us to the next level? We just haven't had the resources or time to do that type of analysis and that would be part of a Climate Action Plan update.
Good. Thank you.
And you're, you're correct. We have taken the easy pieces, the waste. If you look at the Climate Action Plan strategies that have been completed, a lot of the completion icons are for waste items. So you can see those were really beneficial.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Madam.
A soup of legislation.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Planning Commission and City Council. I'm going to provide a summary update of the housing legislation passed in 2017 by the legislature. This is a truncated version of a presentation I made to the Housing Task Force on October 11th. It also, I'll, I'll remind the council and commission that each year, the city attorney's office prepares an annual update of all applicable legislation adopted each year that affects city operations and we'll be sharing that with you probably right around the turn of the, the new year. To start off, I'd like to talk about the inclusionary, this is inclusionary requirements for rental housing. This was AB 1505. The statute authorizes inclusionary ordinances for rental housing projects. It overrules a, a second district court of appeal decision out of the city of Los Angeles that found a conflict between affordable housing requirements, inclusionary requirements for rental housing and the rent control statute, the Costa-Hawkins rent control statute. This statute overrides that conflict and the, and the holding of that court case and authorizes local jurisdictions to adopt capital A affordable inclusionary requirements. That's important for this community because if you're familiar with our existing inclusionary program that's applicable to, for sale units, it applies to middle income categories. This, this authorization is only available for the capital A affordable categories, low, very low, and moderate income. It does not apply to middle or upper-middle income. In addition, the, any ordinance that the city would, would consider would have to include alternative means of compliance instead of the, providing that the developer of the housing and a methodology of complying with the, the inclusionary ordinance through either in lieu fees, land dedication, off-site construction, or rehabilitation of existing units. The last part of it, which is a, a theme that was going through the housing legislature, legislation this year, is that the role of HCD is increased and the oversight of HCD over the actions of local agencies is increased throughout a number of these statutes. This particular statute authorizes HCD to review local ordinances if they require more than 15% of the housing to be affordable. HCD then can review the statutes to determine whether or not the inclusionary requirements adopted by the local agencies are actually acting as a constraint to the production of housing by making housing projects financially infeasible. The, jumping to the, probably the granddaddy of the legislation that was adopted this year, certainly developed the most, generated the most interest amongst local agencies, is SB 35, which provides a process for streamlined and ministerial processing of multifamily housing projects. The key thing to, to begin to understand this statute is that it starts out with a large list of qualifying requirements that projects must satisfy in order to even be able to take advantage of the ministerial processing. The, the objective qualifications, there are 10 of them. I'm providing a partial list just for sake of brevity. First off, it's, it's applicable for multifamily housing in urbanized sites. This is not designed for single-family home tract housing, kind of greenfield development. This is for infill, infill development of multifamily housing. In addition, it's only available in localities that have not met their rent share, but also it requires that any project that utilizes this, this ministerial processing must provide affordable housing in, in the project. Key to this community is that it does not apply in the coastal zone. Or a whole list of other sensitive sites, hazardous, sites that have hazardous materials issues, sensitive habitats. There's a list of approximately eight different categories that take out other available locations. It's also not available for any site where any of the following three actions would, would apply, maybe four. The development cannot require the demolition of affordable housing, rent-controlled housing or, or rental housing. If the rental, if a site has had rental housing demolished within the last 10 years, that site is not available for the ministerial processing. available for the ministerial processing. The development cannot require the demolition of historic resources, and if the property is a for-sale condo project but is currently rented by tenants, that is not an available site as well, in that they view that as a protection for the existing rental housing. Any project taking advantage of the ministerial review must also pay prevailing wage. The project cannot involve a subdivision, and this statute is not applicable or available for redevelopment of mobile home parks. If you make it through all of those requirements, and you can actually take advantage of the streamlined permitting processing, it places some requirements on community development staff. First off, the early confirmation with objective criteria, it puts a timeline on the community development staff, once they receive an application. If the project has one hundred and fifty or fewer units, they have sixty days to review the application against those criteria and inform the applicant whether or not their project qualifies. If that timeline is missed, the project is deemed to qualify for the streamlined processing. This will potentially create some workload issues for community development to make sure that this timeline isn't missed. Projects following the streamlined processing have strict limited design review and public oversight, in other words, public noticed hearings. That review is restricted to assessing compliance with the objective criteria and the objective design and review standards. This is another homework assignment for HCD and also the City Attorney's Office in that the statute provides for a definition of objective zoning standards and objective design review standards. They mean standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submittal. I would submit that our current design review standards don't meet that threshold. So, that's something we need to be prepared for, so that when we get to, if we do have an applicant that meets all of the criteria, we're prepared to have objective zoning standards and objective design review standards that can be applied to these projects. In addition, those standards must have been published and adopted by ordinance or resolution prior to the submission of the applications. So, we need to get out ahead of this. Lastly, those standards shall not inhibit, chill, or preclude the ministerial approval of the project within ninety days or one hundred and eighty days if a project somehow has more than one hundred and fifty units. Lastly, the last bit of good news from SB 35 is that if a project does make it through all of this, it has reduced, the legislature has mandated reduced parking standards. If the project is within half a mile of transit, within an architecturally, historically significant district, on-street parking is not available to the occupants of the development, or car share is located within one block of the development, no parking may be required for the project. If those conditions don't apply, parking is limited to no more than one space per unit in a project that qualifies under the statute. Okay, so, take a deep breath. SB 35 is behind us now. Okay, the next provision is no net loss housing. This is a number of statutes that incorporate and begin to utilize the housing element, housing inventory. Existing law, Government Code Section 65583, requires the city to identify as part of the housing element, an inventory of sites adequate to accommodate the city's regional housing needs allocation. And throughout the development, the planning period, the city is required to ensure that that inventory can accommodate its remaining RENA allocation at all times through the planning period. SB 166 amends that statute in order to prohibit the city from taking actions that would cause that housing inventory to become insufficient to meet the RENA unless the city identifies replacement sites within one hundred and eighty days. In addition, the statute requires more detailed quantification of the city's unmet RENA allocation and the remaining capacity within its inventory when approving development at any density lower than the density anticipated in the housing element. That's the, that last part is the no net loss housing discussion. Essentially, the housing inventory sets a particular density expectation for various projects. If a project comes forward, proposes a project at a lower density, the city is obligated to figure out how are we going to backfill that lower, the unmet density on other sites within the inventory. Following along again with the housing element, AB 72 carries along on that theme that I mentioned earlier of greater HCD oversight for local government. AB 72 requires HCD to review the actions of local governments for consistency with their certified housing elements. If HCD finds that the action or a failure to act on the part of a local agency is inconsistent with the housing element or Government Code Section 65583, the housing inventory, HCD may revoke its certification until they determine that the jurisdiction has come back into compliance with the certified housing element. In addition, this statute authorizes HCD to inform the Attorney General's Office when it finds these inconsistencies. There are a couple of different statutes that have amended not only the annual reporting requirements under the housing element, as well as the reporting requirements that will be required the next time the city proposes a housing element for certification. AB 879 amends the Government Code requiring in the annual housing element reports to include additional information advising HCD about the number of housing development applications received, the number of units that are contained within those applications, and the number of units that were approved or disapproved in the prior year. In addition, it requires a list of the sites rezoned to accommodate the city's share of regional housing need to meet the requirements of the no-net-loss housing. That list shall include any additional sites that may have been required by the no-net-loss These, this is a theme where HCD is gathering more and more information. The legislature wants HCD to become kind of a clearinghouse about how housing development is occurring throughout the state, and I assume that they will, at some point, use that information to advise future legislation in how to address the housing issues. In addition, going forward for the housing element portion of this, the next time the city has its housing element presented for certification, the HCD is required to conduct an analysis of both potential and actual governmental constraints, including fees that might be constraining the production of housing. I'm not sure exactly what, and then also that it requires information about the number of requests from property owners or applicants to develop housing at densities below those anticipated by the housing element inventory. In addition, information regarding the length of time between the approval of a land use and the submittal of the building permit for the actual construction of that project, and a demonstration from local agencies regarding the efforts to remove non-governmental constraints between local planning and the development of housing at all income levels. This was one that I mentioned, the Housing Task Force is fairly, will be a challenge for local agencies. I assume that they mean things like lending, you know, the financial aspects of what's making a project not financially feasible. These are things that are beyond the control of local agencies, and I'm not sure how we will be able to demonstrate reasonable efforts in trying to overcome those kinds of constraints that are beyond our control. And the last provision is the, that I'll be covering today, is the Housing Accountability Act, or the anti-NIMBY law. This is a statute that constrains the local agency's ability to deny or condition housing projects on reducing their density in order to be approved. It requires local agencies that are either denying a housing project or reducing the density of the project to make findings prior to taking such actions. This statute increases the burden of proof for local agencies when denying or reducing the size of housing projects. It's changing the burden of proof from a substantial evidence standard to a preponderance of the evidence standard. As I mentioned at the Housing Task Force, I'm not exactly sure how the preponderance of the evidence standard, which is essentially a fifty percent plus some one measure, applies to the decision-making process for land use approvals. We may, in order to comply with this, we will need to consider how to quantify various subjective distinctions, density of housing versus parking requirements, sensitive land use protection versus housing needs. How do we quantify these things so that you get to some kind of numerical standard that you can present to a court and say, "Look, Judge, we did do fifty-one percent, you know, and we were on the correct side of this balancing test." In addition, the statute says the general plan and zoning amendments that are adopted after the application, after an application for affordable housing project or a shelter is submitted, are not deemed to constitute a valid basis for disapproval or conditioning of a project. So it identifies that the projects are going to be reviewed based on the rules in place when the project application is deemed complete. It did a couple other things that weren't particularly significant or burdensome on the community, but it did amend a fairly complicated definition of mixed-use development to be easier to apply and probably easier for developers to use. Simply, a mixed-use development is a development where at least two-thirds of the square footage is designated as a residential use. One of the last provisions, but the next provision, is that the statute now entitles housing organizations to attorney's fees and costs if they're a prevailing party. Housing organizations can be advocacy groups, they can be any group that is interested in or promotes housing advocacy. So not only does the project proponent now, and their attorneys, if they are a prevailing party in the litigation, get their attorney's fees, but these almost amicus-type litigants that now have, are granted standing, were previously granted standing under the anti-NIMBY statute, but they were granted standing, but they didn't get their attorney's fees. Now they get their attorney's fees, so there's a means of paying for that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in addition, Mr. Colan mentioned that the Building Industry Association is considered a housing organization. Last part, a couple last parts on this particular statute, again, as with SB 35, there are early notice requirements. Once an application comes in, there's a timeline that is set up for the community to tell an applicant whether or not they are meeting, whether or not they're consistent or inconsistent with development standards. And if the city misses that timeline, and providing a written answer regarding the consistency or inconsistency, the project is deemed to comply. And then the last provision I have regarding the Housing Accountability Act is that, and I want to stress that this is, I don't anticipate this particular provision to ever apply to the community, but it is, if a community is found to violate the anti-NIMBY law and it gets, it loses in court, it sets out, or historically, there's been a sixty-day time period for a community to come back and correct that action. Then, if it failed to do so, the court had the ability, but not a requirement, to assess penalties. This statute, the amendments this year, now, if a community fails to correct an action after losing in court, after getting a court order, and fails to correct the violation within sixty days, the court is no longer given the allowance to have penalties. Courts are now required to assess such communities a penalty, and they set a very stringent fine of ten thousand dollars per the number of units. And if a court finds that the community is acting in bad faith, that can be multiplied by a factor of five. I don't expect these penalties to ever be a problem for this community, but it shows that the legislature is frustrated with somebody. And I'm available for questions.
So, I just want to clarify, you're the messenger, not the author of these items.
Thank you.
I have a question, and there might be some around the room. So, our housing rental bonus density overlay AUD process has a range. And so, what I'm hearing is, and I don't know if it's been determined yet, if a developer comes in with a project not at the top of the range, but somewhere in the middle, or during our process, it moves somewhere within the range but not at the top of the range, does that count against the no-net loss? Or does that count against the project reduced units compliance with HCD? I mean, how does, and it's a bonus density, it's not base zoning. How does all that fit in? Do you know yet?
You know, those are really good questions. We certainly weren't anticipating that range, any particular amount in that range. As you say, the AUD density is an incentive, it's above base density. Deborah, do you know how the housing element assigns density?
I can, yes. So, when, in our 2015 housing element, when we identified our opportunity sites and presumed density for build-out of those sites, we didn't assume the highest level. We assumed middle, maybe two-thirds, I think, into the density range, and so that's how we came up with showing that we could meet our RENA allocation. So I believe that we can confirm that if a project comes in at that same assumption that we could say that's commensurate with what we assumed, and this is build-out of the site at the density we assumed. If they came in way lower, or was approved way lower than that, then I think we're in that situation where we have to then be able to explain how we'll make that up somewhere else.
So, you're talking about meeting RENA numbers in the aggregate. I'm talking about a specific project, so, which might make things more complicated, right? So there's the, are you meeting your RENA numbers, which is one analysis, but then if a developer comes in with a particular project, and either through design review or whatever, the community comments or whatever, it's not brought in at the top of that range, does that in and of itself cause the no-net loss of housing or the, you know, the compliance issue, I guess? And that's...
I think Ms. Brooks' answer addresses the no-net loss housing issue, because you look back to the housing element density anticipated. How the anti-NIMBY statute would apply to a project that has its density altered from its original application under an AUD will present, it presents an interesting question that I don't think either the statute or really AUD were thinking of each other.
Right.
And so, how that would play out, it's always, you know, all of this, as you say, the AUD densities are all above the standard base density. And so, how that would, don't have a good answer. And so how that would, don't have a good answer right now about how that would fit out.
All right. I guess something to look into.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Let's go around. Randy, did you have a question?
Well, quick question. Thank you for the uplifting update there, Mr. Vincent. I was, I haven't felt that good about top-down government since I saw it last Tuesday. Real quickly, because it brings up in, not even in the NIMBY one, but in AB 72 about, it brings, mentions the Attorney General. And as we go through these, these RENA numbers and whatnot, when, when a, when a community does not read the RENA, meet the RENA numbers, what are the menu of consequences, number one? Number two is, is there any balance in the RENA numbers and available employment in that community?
As far as, as of yet, the RENA numbers are not production requirements. This set of housing statutes and the amendments to the Government Code is moving closer and closer to a production level or a production requirement, but it's not quite there yet. The way the legislature is still doing it is saying, "You must plan for these numbers." And you, and that, and now they're getting more strict in the sense that not only must you plan for these numbers, but you got to show us how you're going to do it. And you got to be more precise about how you're going to show us how you're going to do it. And if, if a project comes in and you had anticipated that site being developed at a particular density, and the applicant comes in and wants to build it at a different density, well, now you got to, you got to show us, where are you going to backfill in your inventory? So you have, it's, so they haven't made a production requirement yet. There aren't penalties per se in not meeting a production level, them not meeting the RENA numbers. However, you, you can't take actions that make it, that show, or make it impossible to show that from a planning perspective, you have the ability to, to meet those numbers. So that, that's the legislature's approach. I suspect that the handwriting I'm seeing on the wall, though, with all of this additional information that, that HCD is going to be receiving now under these statutes and under the annual reporting requirements, they, if the legislature finds trends in that data, I could see them moving closer to a production level of some kind. Whether that production level would apply to the entire RENA allocation, or maybe it's the lower income portions of the RENA allocation, don't know yet.
Thank you. Nice looking after us.
You mentioned that you thought that there are chunks of the multifamily criteria, zoning criteria, which are, are not going to, that our criteria aren't going to match up with the state's, or there are gaps or some sorts of inconsistencies. Could you describe that? Am I, am I clear in my question?
Yes, Councilmember White. The, the way I understand your question is that the objective criteria for SB 35, objective zoning standards and objective design review standards. We have historically, in my tenure with the city, relied very much on discretionary design review to ensure community character. The discretionary design review doesn't fit into, from the definition I read, objective design review criteria. It, it is, it, it's something that happens once, it's reactive to a project. The applicant presents their project, and then design review reviews it and, and moves forward. When I, when I read the definition that, in SB 35, as to what objective design review standards mean, it, it speaks to me of form-based coding. You know, it really, it, that, that would be, that's the, that's the paradigm I'm familiar with that would meet that kind of standard, where prospectively, an applicant essentially knows, "This is the box you get to build in," and you go from there. Yeah. Thanks.
You have been doing an amazing job since I, I started on council. At least you've been getting more and more work, more and more challenging work, both from our local stakeholders and Sacramento. So I want to commend you on that, but then follow up, how do we support you more? Other than cloning you, what can the Council and Planning Commission do to ease the job of the legal department? Because you're, you're the part of the backbone of, of these challenges, so what can we do to help?
Or you can defer. No, I, I mean, Scott's care and feeding is my job, right? And so here's what we are doing. There are two other lawyers in the office that have a strong interest in learning land use. It's one of those portfolio tools for people who want to be city attorneys. So they'll be brought into the fold. So really, the question is, how do you backfill that and when you backfill it? It is difficult to ask for more when we are in essentially a local government recession, as far as I'm concerned, with the, with the budget. So the answer is more bodies. These are areas that are not going away. They are areas where you can see the state moving into traditional local government territory. That's going to force us to be more aggressive and better prepared than we have been traditionally. Scott used the word reactive in terms of design review. That's exactly right. We're going to have to turn it around to be more proactive about telling the world what we want. So to do that, it's, it's going to be bodies. These are not areas that I can contract out easily. So when we're at the budget time, I don't know if Paul's, Paul's here, we'll, we'll have to put it out there with all the competing priorities.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, and Mr. Vincent for the presentation, really appreciate it, the Housing Task Force as well. Speaking for the Task Force as we go forward, as far as help, I see a number of items here that are, were on our list, even originally, was how to get workforce, affordable housing more produced in the community. And maybe majority of items here is trying to protect the ability to get affordable housing, both by capital A projects, as well as submissions, either voluntarily, including affordable on-market projects, or if we do afford with an inclusionary ordinance, providing that as well. So I, I see it as an opportunity to get back to maybe our original, one of our original points of the Housing Task Force, to see that implement this housing in light of the flavor of what the state wants to see. It doesn't want to see it restricted. So do you think we can work with you at the Housing Task Force going forward to try to define policies that not only are not against the state, but actually help implement what the state is trying to do relative to affordable housing? Thank you.
Sure. Madam Mayor and Councilmembers and Planning Commissioners, there, I, I focused today because of the, the time constraints on kind of the top-down planning that the, the state is doing. There are two other statutes that I did not cover in this presentation or the presentation at the Housing Task Force that would be responsive to Commissioner Campanella's concepts or proposals. These are, and I'm, essentially provisions that are voluntary. In other words, local agencies would elect, they're not required to adopt these programs. But there are two different kinds of programs that would allow for a, a housing supportive district, something like that. I forget, I'm not remembering the name off the top of my head right now, where a geographical area would be defined. That geographical area could be as small as one lot, or it could be a, a group of adjacent lots, where essentially you do your pre-planning. You pre-plan, you, you come up with your form-based coding. It's similar to what we did with the General Plan Update, EIR, where you do some of the heavy lifting for applicants in advance, and then it's a streamlined process in, in once the applications come in. There, and that would be probably one of the programs that, that would be, I'll present the outline of that statute. It's rather burdensome on the local government upfront in that the, in order to, essentially you would adopt a specific plan for these lots that would fall within the program. There are robust public noticing requirements in advance of the adoption of that specific plan, and the, and the specific plan must have very detailed elements regarding land use requirements as well as design requirements. If you put all that package together, then you just say, "Come on in, applicants," and that, and the process is very streamlined on the, on the backside. So that's something that, that the legislature has prepared or allows, has enabled local agencies to consider. It's just the, the upfront logistics is time-consuming and probably expensive.
If I may, just to follow up, that doesn't prevent us from doing a quasi-voluntary situation, let's say, working with our housing authority and the other nonprofits, along with market rate developments to produce the housing, broad range of housing that we need. We're looking, for example, at Downtown State Street, for example, and I presume before some point in the future when that goes forward, there's going to be a public requirement that affordable housing be looked at if we're going to redevelop that area as well. So I think I'd like to maybe work with the Attorney's Office when we get the Housing Task Force back together, and see how maybe we can help implement a lot of these programs voluntarily, let's say, in, in addition to what the requirements are by the state, in order to produce more affordable housing. So again, put that out to you that we'd like to be an active part of that discussion at the Task Force. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Why don't we do the last portion, and then we'll have public comment.
Thank you. And I will try to be brief, because I really do want to leave adequate time for you all. So if I don't touch on a major work effort that you have questions about or want to know more, please feel free to ask me. So I did want to, at the request of many Councilmembers and Planning Commissioners, we did want to touch on Planning Division workload at this joint meeting, although we don't typically spend a lot of time on it. And at the outset, just speak a bit to our normal day-to-day operations, our services and operations. Aside from many major work efforts, we're very busy, and we have been understaffed really since last fall, this time last year. We're still in the process of getting positions authorized and filled, but I'm seeing a light at the end of the tunnel there. With that, we are seeing very steady development activity. One of the attachments to your Council Agenda Report is a list we produce for you each six months that lists the significant development projects. And as we recently let you know, the accessory dwelling unit activity is astronomical, adding 20% to our zoning plan check workload. You also are very aware of the increased number of appeals we've received lately, and they're of just the type that really, we wouldn't be able to mediate or prevent. We do try to intervene early on if we can, work out, resolve issues between applicants and neighbors, but these are, you know, like the medical marijuana dispensaries and short-term rentals are just such a controversial land use issue that we're not able to prevent those from rising to your level. So I apologize that we can't do more there. And then we're seeing just some large projects come through, complex projects, and then as Deborah and her team and others are always needing to go to increased training on emerging issues, staying ahead of the curve where we can. I did just briefly want to update you on the detailed status of AUD units. This is part of our work effort, ongoing. We're monitoring the AUD program and where we stand in terms of its trial period. Interesting to note that as of October 1st, we actually saw a reduction in the number of units proposed overall, it reduced by about 35 units, I think, from September, and that's not abnormal. We see projects withdrawn or just applicants deciding not to pursue projects. And so we're at a total of 962, not including affordable housing units. 735 of those are in the density tier that are subject to the 250-unit trial period. And we're showing it in a more detailed status now, as we are working with the Task Force on a potential growth management component to the AUD program, and really drilling down into where these applications and units stand in, in the pending status, as it may have implications for those projects, depending on when and how that growth management component might be adopted. Okay. And then getting into some major work efforts, just a reminder of some that we've recently completed. Enzo, new zoning ordinance adopted in July, that was huge. It's not over yet, though. So woo-hoo, and then, oh, yeah. So we still have work to do to implement it. And Deborah talked about the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. It's great to have that completed. The infill design guidelines I mentioned that Council adopted in April this year, and then some other work efforts that we've touched on before. So the next three slides, you're familiar with. We've covered these in April, and more or less, this chart represents how we left things with the Council and the Planning Commission in April, with maybe one or two changes or additions to it. So what's highlighted here for FY '18 in that black box is everything that we are currently working on. The X in these boxes means it's undergoing, it hasn't been completed, and if you see that carry through over a couple fiscal years, that means it's a longer-term project that has lasted several years and may last a couple more. Anything with a check mark is something we've recently completed. And I've started showing these broken out by whether it's a general plan implementation action that we're working on, it's an ongoing effort, like the monitoring and the, and the adaptive management program, and then other work efforts. Some of those might be response to state legislation. We didn't foresee calming down the pipe, but we are reacting to it. Or other work efforts, for example, well, like the Acela implementation, that's implementation of our permit tracking software. Not necessarily envisioned in the general plan, but we have Planning Division staff dedicated to that work effort, and it is a major one. So highlighting for FY '18, we have the ongoing measures of the AMP and monitoring AUD, short-term rental enforcement. It was called out here because it was a concerted effort, additional staff and funding for the first two years, and now it's rolled into our regular duties, enforcement duties for zoning staff. We did start and finish the infill design guidelines this fiscal year. That, as I mentioned, did take some resources away from the next item, which is the Title 22 amendments for historic districts, and the Historic Resource Design Guidelines, which are more or less complete and ready for Council adoption, but it's really a companion document to those Title 22 amendments, so we've been holding off and bringing those forward for formal action by Council. Enzo was adopted, now we're in the implementation phase, and that is a lot of training, updating our handouts, our application submittal packets. There are some new processes that Enzo established, like the minor zoning exception, temporary use permits. We need to get those handouts and processes figured out. We need to train the design review boards how to evaluate minor zoning exceptions, because that was a subset of modifications that were going to the staff hearing officer. We pulled those out of her realm and into the design board, so we need to help train them about how to make those findings. Acela I already mentioned, and then the local coastal program update, Deborah gave you an update there. Continuing on to other efforts that are in progress, community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we finished this fiscal year. AUD ordinance amendment phase one, breaking this out into phases to, to try to keep track of the various aspects that, that could be amended. So phase one, I consider to be those three elements that Council initiated amendments for back in August. So that first package has already had Council initiation. That's the requirement that there be two parking spaces for units with three or more bedrooms outside the central business district, prohibition of converting AUDs to short-term rentals, and excluding mobile home parks from the area where the AUD program applies. So that's our phase one package, and would be the first set of amendments that we would work through, Planning Commission and Ordinance Committee. I could tell you at this point, we haven't started work on that package yet, and it will require some teaming up with public work staff as well. Accessory dwelling unit ordinance, you're very aware of the status of that. We began that last fiscal year and will continue through. AUD ordinance amendment phase two is really the outcome of the Housing Task Force work and the various tasks that Council had asked them to study. We've talked about it. One is the growth management component of a potential limit on the number of AUD units permitted each year. That will be a phase two amendment, as well as looking at ways to mandate some affordable housing in some of the AUD projects. Any further adjustments to parking to parking requirements? We've discussed at the Task Force. The potential to maybe reduce parking requirements for downtown housing. And then, again, this emerging conversation of incentivizing and amending the ordinance to allow higher densities of housing downtown along the State Street corridor, whether or not that's a Phase 2 timing or its own effort, I'm not sure yet, but that would be something that would certainly roll into next fiscal year. The environmental resources management element, I keep showing it here as it is something that could easily build from completion of our LCP update. There's a lot of policies that would carry forward in terms of environmental resources, creek setbacks, preservation of environmentally sensitive habitat areas that we could then have applicable citywide and not just in the coastal zone. So that's there as something we see could be one of our next major work efforts in the long-range Planning Division. The land development team fee study was, we presented this as part of our budget to council that we would potentially commence that midway through this fiscal year, so perhaps beginning of the calendar year. That involves a lot of other departments and divisions, though, and so we do need to coordinate with them and see if it's the right time for them. And then, so that ends what we're currently working on. The rest of this slide and the remaining slide are us trying to program when we might work on other efforts that have been prioritized as needing to be done at some point in the next several years. Deborah talked about the update to the General Plan EIR and the Climate Action Plan update. Those right now have not been prioritized for this fiscal year or off into the future, but it is, we believe, critical to put those on our efforts in some top priority for the upcoming fiscal years. The off-sale alcohol ordinance, we would be working with the police department on that, and that's been put on hold until after adoption of the marijuana business regulations. Development impact fee studies, I leave it here because it does come up from time to time. It hasn't been prioritized. We haven't received authorization from council to work on that, so it's not shown anywhere in the future that we would. Same with multi-use, mixed-use design guidelines. The designation of historic districts would be an outcome of, once we've adopted the amendments to Title 22, one of the next steps would be to actually go forward with the work to designate the districts that that ordinance would allow. The Highway 101 air quality setback has shown up on this chart for several years, and, but we do recommend removing it, and it's really, we have a setback for residential development near Highway 101, 250 feet. If you're within 250 feet, you need to have a special design measures to mitigate the air quality of being located that close to the highway. We had hoped that would be an interim measure and that things would have improved and we could eventually eliminate that setback, but recent information seems to show otherwise. And so rather than leave it on here and show that we may never get to it, I'd recommend just taking it off of the work effort for the near-term future. Sustainability 2.0 is really coordinating with a lot of other departments and divisions in the city to implement our Climate Action Plan. That, although was not prioritized by council and PC last spring, in reality, our long-range staff has been involved in that work effort. So I would, for the future, show that as something we're working on in FY18. Milpus Street Corridor Design Guidelines were not prioritized last spring, and so they don't show up here on our future work efforts. The five-year Historic Preservation Work Program, I would bring to this joint meeting in spring. Council established five-year work program there in 2013, so we're coming up on 2018 in implementing all but one of those, and that is the amendments to Title 22. So by this spring of next year, we'd be ready to get our marching orders for the next five years, and then amending the general plan at some point to reflect policy updates made in the coastal zone that has not been prioritized or planned at this point. So we also, as a division, participate with a lot of other divisions and other work efforts going on. The accelerate program you're aware of, enhanced service to State Street businesses, supporting the Housing Task Force, a variety of ordinance amendments that the city Attorney's Office is working on, signs, mobile home park conversions. We are assisting where we need to with marijuana business regulations and reviewing the approved storefront collective dispensaries, and then being involved with SP CAG and transportation staff with traffic model update. So this is a summary of what I discussed in the table of what we're currently working on. It's in progress for this fiscal year. And I think it's important also to point out what I did not cover. These are major work efforts that are mentioned from time to time but have not been on our list and are not currently programmed for the Planning Division to work on, at least not at this point. And so I wanted to highlight them here so that we see them and we could talk about them. If they need to get into the mix at some point and be a priority, then we need to go back and talk about what else would come off of the list. One is a direct response to recent legislation and whether we should amend our inclusionary housing ordinance to allow four rental units in that. We had not received direction in the past to pursue ordinance amendments related to short-term rentals. Similarly, have not received direction to establish funk zone parking district or zone of benefit down there that the downtown area currently has, as well as citywide creek development standards. We will be addressing creek buffers in the local coastal program, but that won't apply citywide. And then, as Mr. Vincent mentioned, he reminded me of another effort we would need to do in response to SB 35, is develop those objective design review standards. So that could be one that we probably would need to do sooner than later, should one of those projects qualify for that expedited review. So that concludes my quick summary of our work.
That's it.
That's it. Wow. That's a lot. Okay. So why don't we go to public comment? I do have a few speaker slips here, and then we'll bring it back to the table for final questions and comments. And we're going to try to leave here by 11:30 as we originally suggested. So, and I have a timer here. It's typically two minutes, and I know some people are waving their time. So we have Anna Marie Gott, and I have two members. I see Pete, and I see Jose waving their two minutes. So Anna Marie, you have up to six minutes, and then we'll have Lee Muldaver after you. And I have your letter here I'm going to pass around right now. Go right ahead.
Good morning. So a few things that I did not actually put on my letter.
Your mic. Put your mic on, please.
Testing. Can you hear me? Okay. A few things that I did not put on my letter, which you guys now have in front of you, really talks about the design guidelines for Milpus. You received a brief introduction regarding SB 35 and how the guidelines for the city need to, cannot be subjective moving forward. Milpus needs design guidelines because without it, we're going to have a hodgepodge of different development, all up and down the corridor. It should be treated just as important as State Street because it's part of the city, and it is really a vibrant part of the city that is being more and more developed every single year. Look at all of the projects for AUD, you know, down in that particular area. So there's my pitch for design guidelines to make sure that, you know, it really gets put on the forefront, because it's not just about that one area. It's about what could happen for the entire city with some of these new laws. It's super important that we are ahead of the curve instead of being behind the curve like the average, well, not average, accessory dwelling unit. Sorry, there's too many AUDs or, you know, ADUs. The next one is cost recovery. We have 25% cost recovery, and we don't even know if we actually get that. I would urge the city council and the Planning Commission to actually think about increasing the cost recovery. It should be 100% for project, for for-profit projects. However, for nonprofits, maybe we actually keep that at 25%. But it would bring more money into the city and be able to offset some of the additional staff that you guys are going to have to hire to actually implement a lot of things that the state has forced upon us. The next thing, impact fees. You know, we're going to have a feasibility study here this year, and we, as soon as we get that, we need to have someone working on the impact fees, you know, for Q1 of next year. The other thing, short-term vacation rentals, really? Do we really want an ordinance on that? You cannot even manage what you've got now, and to include anything to do with home shares would be a nightmare. I can take you to apartment buildings where the entire apartment building is filled with illegal short-term vacation rentals. Staff can't find the short-term vacation rentals, or they haven't, or the information's been sitting up at the city Attorney's Office for years. We have people that have actually converted their one unit on a property to a short-term vacation rental slash hotel. But guess what? There is a unit right next door, nine phone calls to hotel security, which is our police department, over the last year. So it's about, you know, about every month and a half or less. People are woken up in the middle of the night with tourists partying in the backyard in an unpermitted hot tub. And they don't have one hot tub, they've got two. And staff can't shut them down. You guys can't, they can't find the listings? I can find the listings. It makes no sense. It makes no sense that we would actually permit short-term vacation rentals when we can actually not even deal with what we've got right now. That house that I just mentioned, that's three units of housing that are lost right now to our housing supply, and they have one conversion with zero parking, not one space for parking for that hotel. Not one. And a ton of problems. And the idea that we actually think that we're going to permit a short-term vacation rental ordinance when we actually have, how much housing units do we actually need to produce? 4,900? How much are we going to be able to produce? And some of this is, or was, low-cost housing in some of these areas. We have people from out of the area purchasing homes, not just one, but two and three and four homes, with the total expectation that they will convert these homes into full-time use as hotels slash short-term vacation rentals. They don't live here. They've never lived here. They don't intend to live here. And they want to take our housing, turn it into hotels in the middle of our neighborhoods. And that actually is contributing to vehicles on the streets, contributing to calls to police, and it is removing, one unit at a time, of housing from our market. And right now, on an average, we have 800 entire units sucked up for short-term vacation rentals, illegal short-term vacation rentals on a monthly basis. 800 units. That's not even including the ones that say, you know, here's a bedroom. You know, that would actually be that home sharing, but you cannot distinguish between a bedroom and a home. It would be a nightmare, more of a nightmare for staff than it already is.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Lee Muldaver, and then Counselor Vincent Pacheco. We have down to two minutes here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lee Muldaver, Citizens Planning Association. I was dazzled by Attorney Vincent's summary of all the passed and pending legislation in Sacramento where they're going to help us do a better job with our housing standards. I didn't happen to hear the part where all of these legislative authors banded together and decided to encourage the governor to return our redevelopment bonding capacity, which would allow us to fund some of these new mandates. Perhaps Mr. Vincent could explain where that was. I've worked with HCD on and off ever since it was created, and I think that they are actually going to face a similar challenge to what this, and Delora was referring to. When you're working with the coastal staff, one of the reasons behind the delay is that they've got such a volume of things they're trying to work through, they don't have the staff capacity either. So the import of what we've been hearing in two or three years is that HCD, everything is going to be on endless continuation, while the six or seven people that they have for the entire state are trying to review every community's plan. So it takes me back to what Obi-Wan told Luke many, many years ago, which is that the Force could have a powerful effect on weak minds. And I think money from Building Industry Association, the State Association of Realtors, and several adjunct union supporters have had a very powerful effect on legislative minds in Sacramento. But Citizens Planning Association is about local planning for local values, for quality of life for all residents under local control, and we think that's pretty sad, what's happening.
And what they said about the dark side and fear, so that's okay. So careful. All right. Counselor Pacheco, welcome.
First, I would like to thank the Santa Barbara Council for this opportunity, for let San Juan to see how you do your excellent work for a better Santa Barbara, especially now that San Juan is also at our stage of planning our comprehensive land use plan and zoning ordinance amendments being pushed by our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Janelle Erzito. Our affordable housing initiated by Mayor Gia, I just realized, I thought that in San Juan, we only encounter parking problems, issue on redevelopments, but I realize, I think crap also happens anywhere. It's really a learning experience for San Juan Philippine delegates to learn from our sister city, Santa Barbara, California. Where in Santa Barbara, California, in San Juan, I think we're both have the same, we are smaller, but we have the same rich history and the small land area. I would like to appeal to the city government of Santa Barbara, to the city council, Mayor Helen Schneider, and of course, the incoming mayor of Santa Barbara, of this wonderful city, that your sister city values this sister city, but most of all, we would love and value it more if you would let our partnership be a long-lasting endeavor for both cities. We can assure you, Mayor Gia Gomez, on behalf of Mayor Gia Gomez and San Juan incoming mayor, Vice Mayor Janelle Erzito, that San Juan will not be a liability but an asset for this sister city relationship to Santa Barbara, California. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like a trip to San Juan is in order. Can we have our next joint meeting there? Can we do that under the Brown Act? I don't know. All right. Okay, so it's to the council and Planning Commission. I just thought we'd go around in a circle here and have our chair of the Planning Commission end with myself, but so we'll start with Mr. Dominguez. Any question, and you don't have to, but if you have any questions or comments at this point.
So, one, I'd like to ask the same question of Community Development Director Buell that Mr. Kalan stepped in and answered, in terms of, you've got great staff that have been doing amazing work, given the burdens that we in Sacramento have been, have been giving them, the two staff members here, and anyone in your department who I've had the chance to work with. So how do we support you? How do we get more productivity and effectiveness out of the department? Some of the things that I would specifically mention, the ADU that was passed in California about a year ago, and so we're just at the, hopefully, middle towards the end of dealing with that. How can we be more, more agile and -- How can we be more agile and get quicker responses, even if it's just maybe picking off part of the legislation and dealing with it and then tweaking it as we move forward?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'm George Buell, Community Development Director. And with regard to the questions that you've asked, a number of things come to mind. My response in large part will be similar to the answer that you heard from the city attorney with respect to, you know, priorities and budgeting. Obviously, if you're talking about projects that require staff-intensive work, it does require more bodies to be working on that, whether that's in-house staff or contract staff. There's always ways to look to make that happen, but ultimately, it boils down to budget. And so that's a conversation to have when we're looking at the dollars that are being involved, because it would require more people. With respect to better agility, I would be remiss if I didn't also express to you my frustration, one, with Sacramento pushing mandates on us that are unfunded and make it very difficult to us respond, especially when we're in the middle of a budget cycle and, you know, we're having to come back perhaps and ask for money. But with respect to flicker, agility is the word that you, I believe that you used, Councilmember Dominguez, it would require just more coming back, of staff coming back to council and getting redirected on priorities. And if that's something that is the pleasure of the council for us to do, we can certainly do that. However, I think it's pretty remarkable that we come to you twice a year, as it is, and we're metering out the work at the pace that we can do it. If that's not meeting your expectation, then definitely we would need to hear, and then we can respond accordingly. But you have my assurance that we're doing the best that we can under the circumstances. I would also like to recognize really important people in the audience. We have Danny Cato, Jessica Grant, and Irma Lenzueta, and Susie Reardon, who are, you know, they're just getting run ragged right now, and they're doing a great job. And they are overseeing, they're our supervisory staff in planning, and they're doing a really, really good job working at a lot of new planners that we have coming up through the ranks. Renee mentioned that we're very close to being within, by November, we should be, we should have all the holes filled in our staffing and planning. That's very important as part of the equation that we're talking about, because as we have people moving out, we have, moving up, we have people moving out, and it's just a constant game of chess that we're playing with regards to things that you want us to work on, and also the need to staff adequately with the right resources.
So, and I appreciate those comments. Maybe you can meet with department chairs, you know, I know Chief Lu now had a big deficit in terms of staff. When she started, she's been able to correct that for the most part. And it sounds like this has been going on for years, so I'd love to hear a more aggressive and assertive plan. And I know probably most agencies in California are hiring up, so you're in a very competitive environment. So, and you talked about, you said your expectations, meaning ours, but they're expectations we set jointly, both with you and the planning commission, so it's up to you to execute them and come back to us if you need more resources. I just hate if you have to come back to push things back, because there are public safety elements that are involved here, people getting hit by cars, bikes getting hit by cars, there are businesses that are going under because they aren't able to move quickly enough through the system. These are very real impacts on our residents and stakeholders that we can't control, but you can. So it's been a year that we've been understaffed. You guys have to light a serious fire, and if there's anything we can do, you have, there's salary savings in a lot of the departments. I can't remember where your department came in, but if it's a matter of money, every developer I've talked to has said, we'd much rather pay a little more and get this done faster than risk the holding costs. So who knows, maybe some of that's bluster, and maybe I haven't talked to the right people. But someone mentioned the full cost recovery. If we can move towards a fuller cost recovery, if that'll increase the time for the developers and also the quality of the product, because that's one thing where there's not going to be a compromise, is the quality of development projects in Santa Barbara. We're not going to relax our standards, but we can help them push through faster. Okay. Thank you, unless you have anything else you want to?
I would want to just supplement. Renee pointed that we are looking at, talking about cost recovery, and that speaks to revenue, and it speaks to our capacity to do more work. One of the things that we, we're looking at a fee study, and I have directed our business manager to begin working on the RFP in coordination with the business manager and Public Works Department, because Public Works and Community Development work hand-in-hand when it comes to fees. And so that process is underway, and you will be seeing that within the, probably the next four months or so, a contract.
Great, thank you.
Mr. White?
Wait, 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 that was just on that one piece.
All right, well, we have a whole lot of people and, all right.
But you know what? No, that was just on the one piece, you know, and I try to give 30,000-foot level stuff. There's a lot of critical problems that I don't think a lot of people dig into, so I'm trying to dig in deep here. Regarding the housing, the AUD, unfortunately, the numbers in the report that was released for this meeting don't break it down in terms of the income levels, and we had those at Housing Task Force, so they're available. They were in our Housing Task Force report at the last meeting. For our moderate, 80% to 120% of area median income, we're producing 1.5% of the RENA numbers. So people talk about the AUD being a success. Well, I don't know how you could possibly call 1.5% of our goal a success, right? In high school, 50% was an F, and we're producing 1.5. In our low-income housing, the very low, I'm sorry, we're producing .3, that's 0.3% of the RENA goals. So we're doing much better in the highest incomes, but that wasn't the goal of the program. And it's fine if that's what the community wanted, but we specifically, not we, because I wasn't on the council, so I don't want to put words in the mouths of the people who pass that, but I thought it was supposed to be a workforce housing program. So please, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a failure, because not only are we only producing 13 units, and there were 820 called for, but as both of the speakers this morning mentioned, our short-term rentals are eating that up like there's no tomorrow. Just the one project she mentioned has several units that would otherwise be in that workforce category, because they're moderate income-level housing. Also, the housing we are building, the Mark, actually increases the demand at the workforce level. So we really need to, and if staff sees this and wants to bring it to us, you know, I think it's incumbent upon staff to really illustrate this for us, because I think there are some people who are resistant to this ideologically. The development impact fee studies, we've got that coming, so I think it has to come to council now for the authorization. So again, if staff wants to bring it to us, if not, let us know that you're not going to, and then maybe we can do a council memo. Same thing with the Milpis guidelines. I'm not sure where Ms. Maria went, but she was worried about it. She voted against it twice because she was concerned other communities might want to do this similar thing. Well, if that's the case, they should step forward and let's have a conversation, but let's not vote down projects because other people may have similar needs. This is a need that's been existing, so let's get it out there. The local coastal plan, again, I want to get that.
Chair of the floor, Senator.
Yeah, you know, you're going to have as much time as you want.
We don't have as much time as you want. You've been going for almost 10 minutes now, so if you could wrap it up, so we can have a chance for everyone else to speak.
Fine, go ahead and tell everyone they're doing a great job and ignore the issues.
No, if you want to have that attitude, you're welcome to, but not, but you're not yet, you're not next. Mr. Hart, Mr. White, you are next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, and I appreciate we have limited time here. I want to emphasize the point about fees and cost recovery and such. That's, I have for a decade or longer advocated a, that we use fees a little bit like interest rates, where when times are very good, that we are able to charge closer to full cost recovery, and when times are not so good, that we are being more accommodative to our applicants. And so, and clearly, we're seeing between the legal staff and the planning staff, we clearly need more bodies, and those can be, Mr. Dominguez mentioned, contracting out various plan check processes, that's a good idea, as well as contract planners. Other jurisdictions in this region are, actually have absorbed a lot of the highest quality of the contract planners, and many are retired former planners of the city of Santa Barbara, and they're working in Galita and County and other places. Just those kinds of folks that are still wanting to do that part-time work, we should look into that. The historic resources work is clearly one of the ways that we can defend against the state, I think, so it's something that, in terms of priorities, is really important. Mr. Vincent talked about form-based codes. I think that that's probably the direction that I see State Street going. We've got, this is the opportunity, I think, that can bring a lot of people together. I think that, whereas we're having a lot of conflict on the AUD projects coming into neighborhoods, that State Street is, there's definitely a worry about State Street that I think will result in some neat opportunities there. Let's see. And then that multifamily criteria that we heard, again, heard Scott talk about, it's something that we, objective zoning requirements, we need to put those in place in order to be defending against the state taking over these various activities. Okay, I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
I think it's important to perhaps have Mr. Casey come up and give us a reality check about resources, workload, time. I think it's really difficult for the department heads to address council in a defensive way when they're essentially being attacked by a council member. Councilmember Dominguez consistently berates staff and raises issues that divert attention and strain resources and waste time, and I think it's really important for the city administrator to really address that directly. The most important work product of this conversation today is a better understanding of what is possible with our limited staff and our limited resources to do. It does not help us to add unrealistic fantasy items to the workload. The things that staff has already identified that we're not going to get to in the next three years, despite everybody's interest in them and perhaps their urgency, is the real issue on the table today. And we consistently, as a council, do this, where we raise issues and raise flags and get everybody excited about things that are not possible to achieve, given the resource constraints that we have. And there are fantastic rhetorical flourishes that get added to this discussion about how we could do this and do that to address that problem. The real life is, we are severely resource constrained. I love the phrase that the city attorney raised, used, that we're in a local government recession when it comes to the reality of fiscal situation. We're asking the voters to give us additional money for capital infrastructure, which will require a huge workload of staff to execute and deliver. We're promising the voters that we're going to deliver $22 million a year in additional capital infrastructure, a significant new promise that will require significant new staff to deliver. I think that is a much higher priority than the things that other council members continuously bring up and divert attention from. And that, I think it's about time we start addressing the real issue about those kinds of things.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you. I'm not sure to whom to address this, but both ABR and HLC have been dealing with basically land issues that seems to me should go to the planning commission. How do we deal with that?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I believe if you're referring to some of the larger AUD projects primarily, it was intentional that those projects go to the design boards as a streamlined measure for these projects, that they not be decided by the planning commission. There was an amendment to the AUD ordinance, I believe, two years ago now, to have them go to the planning commission for comments. That was our attempt to have the planning commission as the land use decision-making body, be able to help advise HLC and ABR on those projects. The ordinance requires a certain type of project that has to go through that process. ABR and HLC also has, in their ordinance already, an ability to refer projects to the planning commission.
Yeah, I'm also referring to the conversions to short-term rentals.
Okay, correct. So that has been a challenge for the design boards, I do agree. Those that have required development plan findings, even though the boards are familiar with development plan findings, that's presented a pretty unique challenge for them. As staff, we've been there to advise them, our professional opinion, as to whether those projects are consistent with land use policies. We haven't aligned with the decision-makers in every case on that. It would require an ordinance amendment in order to have those particular projects be elevated to the planning commission, because there's that square footage trigger right now.
All right. How do we stand on the accelerated State Street approval program? I think that's George, maybe?
I could, if George wants to come up. I don't recall the stats off the top of my head, but I know generally, we're not hearing bad things, so I'm assuming things are going well. We have point people in Building Safety and Planning Division that applicants are referred to right away if they fit the, you know, within the geographic boundaries of Accelerate. We're getting people connected to the right staff right away. Their projects are being prioritized on design boards.
So it is having an effect?
We believe it's having an effect, and I will say, we haven't had too many new applications submitted since kicking off the program, but we have, we had quite a few projects already in the pipeline when it was implemented, and they are benefiting from it, though, because they're getting to take.
George, you got anything to add to that? Thank you, I'm just trying to keep moving here.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we are generally, I'm hearing positive feedback about the program. I'm also hearing opportunities for improvement in how communication can happen a little bit more smoothly. But as Renee said, we do have a number of projects within the corridor that are benefiting from the program. We do have statistics, I would not prepare with those right now, but we'll email them out to the council so that you can all be aware of what we're tracking and monitoring at this point.
No, I just want to publicize that a little bit. Finally, to, I think, the city attorney, how are we doing on STR enforcement?
There are two aspects of vacation rental enforcement. Right now, we're actually spending more time on the defensive side of it, and that is, over the summer, some of the design body matters that Ms. Brooke referred to came to the council on appeal. Being perfectly candid, those, along with the cracky case, are part of a concerted collaborative effort by property interests to stage a variety of challenges to the city's regulations in order to punch a hole through them. So.
That's important, all right.
Three cases are in court now. The case involving 101 West Annapamoo, that's called CAT, C-A-T-T. The case involving 2017 Bath, the property owner there is a gentleman named Rudman. And then the cracky cases in Ventura County Superior Court, and tries to allege that the city, and this is the truth of it, tries to allege that the city council's decision to fund additional enforcement in community development in my office constitutes development under the Coastal Act that required a coastal development permit.
Well, I agree, that's an imaginative interpretation, but how about?
On the direct enforcement side, we have not filed an enforcement action against a specific property. We are on the verge of doing that. What we are seeing, and why these cases are difficult, this is partly responsive to Ms. Gott, is that there is a variety of creativity happening around how the 30-day rental is structured. So we are seeing sham leases that are leases to multiple parties, that on the face of them are for more than 30 days, but are really sham vacation rentals. We are seeing, and I'm using the word sham in a calculated, intentional manner, we are seeing sham leases for 31 days where there is a termination opportunity for the tenant after the weekend is over. So we're approaching those cases very carefully, because we're going to win when we deal with them. And on the actual day-to-day enforcement, we have a number of settlement agreements that are out there that have been signed. We have reason to believe that some of those settlement agreements are being ignored. The council funded, and we are a couple weeks away from final interviews of a city attorney investigator. Part of their responsibility will be to follow up on enforcement. That's a capacity that community development doesn't necessarily have. So, long answer to your question, but in a nutshell... So, long answer to your question, but in a nutshell, we have an organized, strategic approach to these cases. It is slow and difficult. It will be a maintenance of effort issue, and it ranks just below actual safety issues for residents of Santa Barbara. So we are giving priority to direct safety issues as opposed to neighborhood nuisance issues in our decisions about allocating resources.
I don't want to dominate the time here, I just get the feeling that people think it's the law that they're not going to follow, and we need to correct that impression. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think it's ironic that the state tries to streamline the process to expedite housing and put us into more of a fast-food mode for approving things opposed to our normal deliberative process, that it actually increases the workload for staff. So, we are in a new paradigm. I think we are going to be having to look at either more cost recovery through fees or expedition, or some kind of a way to beef up staff and the issues they have to deal with. That being said, though, I still would like to see us go forward with a Milpas Eastside Neighborhood Design Guideline. I think it is something that's essential, it's a little overdue, and I think it is going to be critical going forward. So, hopefully, there'll be citizen participation in that, and I know that'll take staff time as well, but I do think that has to be one of the priorities we bring forward.
Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with many of the comments that have been made, and obviously, it's a huge workload that staff has, and with some not easy issues to resolve. I was very disappointed when, after this group had made a priority of the amendments to Historic Resources Ordinance, 2222, Historic Structures Ordinance, that it got pulled. I think it was mostly a matter, there had been, this group, the council authorized a subcommittee to work on it. There were two meetings, one in May, one in June, and then Jaime Limon retired. And I think that had a lot to do with it, why staff then said, you know, well, we're taking this off the list. As Commissioner Maria said, especially with the ADUs coming along, it's even more important that this be finished. It's not that far from being done. And I would like to suggest that, I know that Bill Ferguson, who worked for Public Works and was working on the pass-through agreement, retired, and he was hired back to finish that. And I would like to see the city reach out to Mr. Limon and see if he would come back and help finish this one little piece, and then we could check that off the list. It was, it wouldn't require a great deal of money, obviously, is very well informed, no, you know, having to inform a consultant about what we were, what the city's after and so on. So I would like to throw that out there as a suggestion for moving forward on that priority.
I think there's a line in The Godfather that reminds me of, "Just when I thought you were out, they pulled you back in." But, but good comment. Mr. Thompson.
Well, that's a good idea about hiring Jaime back for short-term to get it finished. I too think that it's close to being finished, and we ought to get it finished. I don't have anything big to say, other than on the major work efforts, like we all would like to see a lot of those X's moved left to checkmarks sooner, but we just have to work through it. I did have to smile when Bendy was saying about, we might be driven by the state to form-based coding. You may remember when you were on the planning commission, I used to go round and round with Betty Wees about form-based codes, and she said, "Never in Santa Barbara." And now, it looks like the state may be driving us to it. Interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Campanella.
Thank you. On the Climate Action Plan, I think I wholeheartedly support staff's effort to continue to update information as needed, to comply with the requirements in the mayor's committee, the mayors of cities committees and others that we have to comply with. It's going to get tougher in the future to make targets put down by the state unless we really get proactive in trying to come up with ways to, especially vehicle miles traveled, single occupancy vehicles, we have to address that. And with Transportation Department and best practices that we see elsewhere, that's a target that has to, we have to reduce that in order to make the target levels that's coming in the future. And I wholeheartedly support staff's efforts and funding to do that, not only this staff, but also transportation. On the regulations that came down from the state, I think, I'd like to make one suggestion, and perhaps it's at our Housing Task Force meeting next month. We, when Scott was telling us, giving us an update at our last meeting, we questioned what items might we be considering that would be in conflict with the new regulations? I know we're looking at priority orders on certain projects. I was concerned that one suggestion to look at is size, bulk, and scale to give a project post points, but that's what the design review boards do. So I think we probably should look through our agenda list and what our topics are to see now what might be in violation, and not spend the time on it and cause consternation to the property owners and development community when we refocus back in November. I'd like the, our attorney to be there and let us, give us guidelines of what we might take off the list, or there's a danger if we move forward on it, that it's not going to be accepted by state HCD at some point in the future. And then, as, the other item is, that also would help the workload, there's a number of items that we'd have to go through to come up with the scoring system and take up staff's time. We're going to see a draft report from our consultant on impact fees and what the determination on AUD project rentals, what impact they have on their requirement for affordable and other type housing. We'll see that in November. We'll see what impact fee related with that can be substantiated and absorbed by the projects. And this is in line with what the state is looking at to see financial, if they don't want to overburden projects, and I think we'll be seeing that. And hopefully, we can cut our list short of recommendations that we're making in Phase Two to the AUD project and move forward. We have Phase One done, let's make some selective Phase Two changes, let's move forward with it, and start to give certainty to the development community. We've dropped about 15% in our pending and approved units in the last 60 days, and I think there is uncertainty out there relative to people putting in applications and going through the process, not knowing what rules they have to contend with. If we want an inclusionary ordinance, let's work on it now, but at least let people know what's coming up and what might be affecting the projects that they're submitting. Other items in the workload, I'm going to really leave it up to staff. I think Paul and George really know what priorities are and what they should be spending time on. Any wish list items probably should be put on the back burner, I agree with Mr. Hart. Let's get things done that really need to be done, and I rely on staff and the city administrator to come up with those items that we should be concentrating on. Thank you.
Ms. Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just keep my comments short. Obviously, we're at a time where we need to balance our local needs and priorities with these state mandates. And I think it's become more important with the workload that staff has, that cost recovery through fees is probably pretty essential to, to help alleviate the workload and at least get some of it, get some things funded. I think the historic resources work is very important, particularly in light of the state mandates. Commissioner Lodge talked about that. The Milpis Eastside Design Guidelines, I think, really deserve to be worked on. The neighborhood deserves, they're getting a lot of development, and they deserve their own set of guidelines. And I'll just conclude with saying, I think it's really important, and Commissioner Campanella commented on this, that we pursue the Climate Action Plan update. And I was intrigued by the fact that there may be some grant funding for that, which I think would be important. And it goes along with what Councilmember Hart said about the fact that, you know, we're asking the, we're asking the taxpayers to give us a one-cent sales tax increase, and that's, that's fine, but with the, with the Climate Action Plan update, you might actually find some areas in there and some actions in there that would allow us to increase our sustainability while we are repairing our infrastructure from, from the sales tax. Thank you.
Mr. Higgins.
Thank you. So I think we're in a new day here, clearly, with regard to housing issues and legislation from the state, that leads me to believe we should be reshuffling the deck here on our chart. And I guess we're not going to be making numerical, sort of quantitative votes on how to prioritize this like we did last time, but we'll leave it up to staff to interpret what's happening here. But I'm going to ask you a question specifically, Councilmember Hart, about your statements, too, that were inspiring to me, but I'm left with a couple of questions. I think, as I count through the list, we have really a number of projects that are coming off the list, and a number of projects that I think, from staff's viewpoint, a number of projects here that could be reprioritized down the list so that we can take care of our housing obligations. Historic districts certainly need to be up there, and our design guidelines, somehow we have to get a handle on design guidelines that are objective, and if that means we need to go to form-based code in some areas as a test pilot program, then we need to do that. I'm not clear on how we get the jumble of design guideline, sort of vernacular, infill, mixed-use, Milpis, you know, area-specific. It leaves, I think, our applicants very confused on what is going on and where. So, we ought to prioritize getting that done, and I'd certainly agree, if we need to bring back Mr. Limon, that would be a good thing to do. It's just, there's too much overlap between our design guidelines and our historic districts. Those are really, and ADU will be theoretically out of that this coming year, early on, I would assume, with our code. And so that really just leaves AUD and our design districts and our historic districts to really focus on, certainly STR and LCP need to stay on the list, but everything, sorry, I mean, you're following me, I know you are. Everything else, really, you know, our Climate Action Plan is adjusting to something that's moving a little slower than our housing legislation, so we ought to be focused on that in our, in our housing. Councilmember Hart, I've heard you speak several times here recently, and I'm always left inspired, but I'm always then questioning, what did he just say? It sounded really good. But, so, you know, prioritizing what we all want to work on and think are great and exotic and sexy projects, I think is at the heart of the matter. What is it that you think we ought to put down at the bottom of the list and the top of the list? In terms of, so, you know, we're not taking a quantitative poll here, so maybe some specifics would be ideal for staff.
Well, I think, if you're asking me directly to answer the question, what I would say is that the city council hires two people. We hire the city manager, and we hire the city attorney. And it's important for council members to recognize that role and that responsibility, and to focus our attention on those two individuals. So I would look to our staff, the city attorney and the city manager, to develop a work program that is realistic with the resources that we have, that addresses the changing priorities that's coming from the state, and marries what we need to do first locally, so that we can actually accomplish these things. I don't think it helps us to sit up here and imagine things that are beyond the capacity of our staff. And I think my experience in these dialogues, more often than not, is that is the case, that we do not have any fiscal discipline or resource discipline in these conversations, that we individually go around the table and say, "I think these top five things are a priority because they're all important to individual communities and constituencies," but there's no connection between the resources that are available to actually do those on a timeframe that's reasonable. And having that input from our staff, I think, would make this much more productive than what it actually ends up being.
So let me, are you done with your comments?
Again, inspired, but I don't, which projects do you think we should not be working on? I don't think, I don't think our staff honestly is in a position to answer in this format. I think we should have our city manager come back with a realistic workload that's achievable.
Mr. Casey, did you have...
Then, then your, your point about, you know, staff being on the defensive here is just an inappropriate time for, for that dialogue?
Yeah, I think, I think the way this is structured does not lend itself toward a real, we have four more minutes to conclude a conversation, or eight more minutes to conclude a conversation, that is a very long, detailed, dense conversation. And I don't know, we had more than an hour and a half of presentation, we have less than 45 minutes for 13 people or so to talk. It just, this is, this does not work.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring, Mr. Casey came up to the, so let's give him some of those eight minutes, and then I'm going to try to wrap up with some suggestions.
Good morning, everyone.
If you can put your mic on.
Yeah, it's on. Good morning, everyone. First, what is the purpose of these meetings? The purpose of why we established these meetings to meet biannually was to set the workload priorities of the planning division, and in tangent to some extent, the city attorney's office, who supports a lot of these efforts as well. So we try to lay out to you what our workload priorities are, and what we feel we've got the staff resources to be able to accomplish between now and the end of the fiscal year. If we are off-base, we need to hear that from you. These are the priorities that you all have set, and we think we're on base with where you all have been. You know, I go around and I hear one person say this and one person say that. I got to admit, I work for a majority of the city council, I need direction from four to set my priorities. And so, if there's a majority of you that wants to reprioritize or take something off, we can then look at the resources we have and adjust. The idea of just adding resources, I do share the conversation that's occurred, that we're in a belt-tightening budget environment right now. We've got an over $2 million deficit. I doubt council's going to want me to reduce expenditures in public safety. That leaves it down to libraries, parks, and recreation, and community development. So it's difficult for me to expect that I'm going to find new general fund money to add staff on. We are looking at the LDT fee study. I think there's room there, and I continue to hear this push that maybe we need to be charging more fees in a way to get more resources into the department. I think that's something we will look at, something I'll talk to Mr. Buell and Ms. Brooke about being a little more aggressive on than historically we've had support and interest to do so. I've heard a number of people talk about the Historic Resources Guideline, it was not pulled off on the list. As Ms. Brooke said, we had some staffing challenges and changeover and shortages that had to make priority decisions. That's what we have managers do, is make those decisions. It's still on the list, and as she says, you know, we hope to get back at it in a matter of months. I got to admit, it's a lot on Mr. Vincent as well. And a lot of things we talked about today is piling on Mr. Vincent as kind of our land use attorney. And so, there's only so much we can kind of squeeze out of the turn-up, but Historic Guidelines is still on the list. You're not a turn-up, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say that. So, so apologize, Scott. Wow. So, so that's still on the list, it's still a priority, we will get that done, we will get back to it. And then the other thing I've heard, a theme, and what I try to do is hear themes, because we haven't gone around and made motions and given priorities, but I've heard themes of design guidelines and the Milpis and Eastside Design Guidelines. And so, let us kind of take that and see how we can tee that up. It may not be in the immediate list, but it might be on the next list, and so, hope that helps.
I think it does. So just to try to, and some, I guess, some comments and some suggestions. There are a couple things that I saw on the list that are almost done, that it would seem would be good for customer service and back to our community to get them done, and then get the anxiety of it still on the list, off the list, so you can focus on other things. The two, those two items are the historical Title 22 piece, but also the Phase One of AUD. I mean, every time the parking short, and the short-term rental thing in the mobile home, you had unanimous votes. I don't, unless I'm missing something, I don't see why that can't just be an amendment to an ordinance, put it to an ordinance committee and get it through without, I don't think we need a long process. I think we've already made those decisions. The other Phase Two thing is a bigger discussion, but at least to get those done so that when new projects come onboard, if they're three bedrooms in an AUD, we already have that on the books, and we're not going to be wrangling with that back and forth with actual projects. I'm glad, Mr. Thompson, you brought up form-based codes from way back in the general plan update. I'm remembering Bruce Bartlett, who brought that up each and every time at this room during the general plan update. I think there were even, you know, big public meetings about it, so thank you for letting me remember Mr. Bartlett. But, and if we're looking at form-based code, if that's a way to be proactive with what's happening with Sacramento, just to piggyback from what Mr. Higgins is saying of a test case, maybe that is how we deal with the Eastside Milpis, as if we need to do this anyway citywide, is that an area of the city that can address a community need and see if it works, and then try to replicate that citywide? That might help, instead of adding on to something, that's going to be a different way of looking at how we're dealing with being proactive with all the statewide mandates that are coming down.
Totally agree with that.
Huh?
Totally agree. Eastside's a good test place to start.
Right, if that, that might help collaborate all the comments here. And then finally, on funding, obviously, a council has to make those determinations. Tuesday, we heard from, was it this week? Gosh, I don't even know. You know, the preliminary results of the, of the, of the budget from last year, and there was some salary savings that, yes, we said, "Let's move it all to capital." I... I guess, having heard this conversation, if there are some one-time issues for consulting work or something, so it's not an ongoing expense, but it's a one-time issue that might accelerate some of the projects, the money we're talking about came from salary savings, so maybe there's a nexus there. I'm not suggesting all of that funding, but if there's one or two things that might help kickstart some things that, through a consultant, as you mentioned, you might need that kind of extra work. Obviously, that has to go back to council to allocate, and maybe when, beginning of the year, usually have a six-month review period, that would be a good time to have that discussion, that might help. And then, finally, obviously, during the budget hearing, this is going to obviously be a decision, because we are typical in that we want it all done yesterday, and more. So, so, I get the frustration of efforts that we want to do everything yesterday, but we also want to do it right. And I also think there's some things out of our control, mainly what's going on with the new legislation, that if we don't act soon, then we're going to be playing, spending more time catching up and redoing things. ADU being a good example of 200 and something applications without an ordinance in place yet, and we're playing in the middle here. So, let's not create other situations like that. So, it is 11:30, and I'm sure if people have other comments and things and want to chat, they can, but I want to give the planning commission a good lunch period, because you get to talk about cannabis in very short period of time. You have a long meeting ahead of you, too, so...
We have to go try the free samples.
Is that before? I thought it would be after, but, so, thank you for having a very long day, and thank you all for being here.
Quick comment if I could, Madam Mayor. I talked to Jaime Limone, he's pretty happy where he is.
Just now? Just now, you talked to him?
No, a few weeks ago.
A few weeks ago.
He lost about 20 pounds and just is looking great, said, "Yeah."
All right. Well, thank you very much, we're adjourned.